Herndon Town Council Public Session, May 22nd, 2018.
Good evening, everyone. We're actually starting a couple of minutes early. Is that okay, that we're doing that, Madam Town Attorney?
No.
Sure. Sure, okay. Just checking. I'm a rules girl. Okay. I will call the meeting to order. Thank you for being here. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, prior to the start of our council meeting, the town council and some of our senior staff had a meet and greet with Northwest Federal Credit Union representatives who are here en masse tonight. We're thrilled for that. They're going to have some comments for us on the general item authorizing the town manager to sign an MOU to host the Herndon Festival at Northwest Federal Credit Union. So I will acknowledge you guys first when we get to the comments from the audience portion. We have a couple of changes in our agenda that I wanted to alert the audience to. Special Exception 1802, Angela's Barber Shop. The applicant has submitted a letter to withdraw this application, so the council will forego the public hearing and will not take action on this item tonight. Also, there is number 1708 to authorize VDOT to proceed with the detailed design phase of the East Spring Street Widening and Improvements Project. Staff recommends that the council continue this public hearing to June 12th to allow additional discussion at the June 5th work session at the appropriate time later this evening. I'll open the public hearing, ask for comments from the audience, and then ask for a motion to continue. And finally, staff's been busy this week. A resolution pertaining to the financial policies and internal administrative policies had been placed in our consent agenda, but the town manager has advised that the resolution was revised subsequent to last week's work session to incorporate some additional language, so we'll pull that off the consent agenda with concurrence of council and hear from our Director of Finance on that, and then we'll take action separately. So that's all the changes I have for now. We have one set of minutes up for approval. Is there a motion to approve the May 1st work session minutes?
So moved. A second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. We have several presentations this evening, so we'll just get right to it. First is the presentation of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the Department of Finance. The town of Herndon has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Governmental Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. The town has received this certificate for the past 43 consecutive years and from its first report that was submitted in 1975. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government, its management, and in particular, its finance department. We take great pride in maintaining this consistency and fortitude at this 43-year accomplishment. No pressure for next year. The standards include demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate the town's financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. So congratulations to Jenny Tripoli, who's our Department of Finance Director, and I see lots of our staff there. I'm so excited you guys are here tonight. So congratulations, and I'll ask if council has any comments before we call you up for the presentation. Anybody? Nope. We're just excited for you. So congratulations. I'll invite down Jenny Tripoli and all of your staff, the entire council, town attorney, town manager, and anyone else that would like to come forward to honor the finance staff.
All right, I've been here, I think, 15 months now, and I still don't get this right. Let me start over. I'd like to thank the mayor and town council for this recognition, and also the town manager for his support. But this is truly a team effort, and all of the little things, or not-so-little things behind the scenes that take place that make life easier, especially for the deputy and myself, really contribute to making the CAFR easy to get out. The audits are always clean. This is our 43rd year, so just want to thank Jerry Schultz, who's the Deputy Finance Director, and he's in attendance tonight. Myra King, the Revenue Supervisor. Jody Florentine is our new Water and Sewer Supervisor, and Jill of all trades Sue Carrico, who we've really kind of run around the department this year, and she's been really pinch-hitting a lot. Been a lot of great accomplishments this year in finance as we're utilizing this new system that you've invested in for us, and we're really appreciative. We're starting to go slowly but surely paperless with checks, accounts payable is running beautifully, payroll. Lolly's learning the system beautifully. Revenue is really busy with Myra and Terry right now as we get into munis on the revenue side. Jody is new. She's picked up water and sewer just beautifully, so it's really a huge team effort, and this doesn't happen without all of them doing their very best, and they're a great team, and I'm so fortunate to be here with this team and with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next is a proclamation to recognize Memorial Day, and I will call on Councilmember McKinnon to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Memorial Day, May 28th, 2018. Memorial Day, observed each year on the last Monday in May, originated after the American Civil War to commemorate the Union and Confederate soldiers who had died during the war. By the 20th century, Memorial Day was extended to honor all Americans who died while serving in the nation's armed forces. During this holiday, we emphasize the invaluable freedoms and securities that citizens of the United States enjoy. Our direct results, the bloodshed and continued vigilance of the United States Armed Forces over the course of our nation's history, and we honor and preserve the legacy of these great Americans. Therefore, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, hereby, recognize Monday, May 28th, 2018, as Memorial Day in the town of Herndon. Express our deepest appreciation to the men and women in uniform who have paid the ultimate sacrifice to defend the United States and principles in which it was founded, and admire their unwavering devotion to our great nation. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, hereby, implore all Americans to pay tribute and show gratitude towards the men and women in the armed forces and their families through the display of flags in red, white, and blue ribbons throughout the month of May, and especially on Memorial Day, May 28th, 2018. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, hereby, encourage all individuals to honor Memorial Day with the appropriate events and activities. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? Mr. McKinnon.
Veterans Day and Memorial Day are big holidays to me. My father was a surviving son from World War II. I've said it a couple of times. He lost two brothers in World War II. The town I come from, Danell, New Jersey, nicknamed the Danell and Destroyers. The USS Herndon was a destroyer in D-Day. I think that's kind of a little crazy for me. But 10% of where I came from lost their lives. We had over 390 people pass away in my town, and there's a large memorial to them, and it's the reason why they changed their name. And even though I didn't get to know my uncles, I know why my dad pushed me so hard, because he had a lot of responsibility on him. And it's the reason why I hold this, these days, dear. And there was one person in particular. His name was Dick Graham, and he was the post commander of VFW Post 5449, and he was a prisoner of war in Korea, and I didn't know this. Growing up, he was just Uncle Dick to me. And then it was one day in the store where, my parents' store, where a car backfired and he hit the ground like a shell had come in, and he was really embarrassed by it, and my dad thought nothing of it. But it was through that I learned what the sacrifice this man made for me, and what everyone's done for me. I know, and the other thing, it's Wayne Kidwell, when he passed away, he passed away on March 8th, 1968, and I was born in March 8th, 1974, and he passed away for my, he sacrificed his life for me, and I wasn't even born yet. So there's no way I can thank you, but thank you. That's all. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. I want to add my thanks to Councilmember McKinnon, as well as I know the rest of us. My husband's a 20-plus-year veteran of the US Army, and he served two tours in Korea as well. And you think about the sacrifices that families make just to have a loved one serving this great nation, and then you think about the ultimate sacrifice those families make when they lose a loved one. So to take the day and think, oh, it's a great day to barbecue, yeah, it's a great day to barbecue. But there's a reason why you're barbecuing. And so remember the folks who, and the families, who made it possible for us to enjoy the freedoms and the pleasures of Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs.
I want to also mention the American Legion Post 184 and thank them for putting on this event every year. My husband is also a veteran in submarines, so we need to express our support for our fallen countrymen and women, many of whom are friends and neighbors, and their families for their sacrifice. So I hope you'll join us on Monday at 10 at Chestnut Grove for the annual Memorial Day remembrance that the American Legion is putting on. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Olem, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'm looking forward to this service, as I have for many years here in Herndon. And my father was in the Navy during World War II, and his brother was Air Force, so they were on water and in the air. Thank you for your service, and I look forward to the event, and maybe Cindy Roder can stop the rain on Monday. I'm going to put in an order. If she hasn't already left, I'll call her.
I think she's putting all her bets on the festival weekend, but maybe she can help us out. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes. Yes, I just want to echo the comments of my fellow council members, and it's wonderful to see so many members tonight from our American Legion representing, including, of course, former council member Dave Kirby, who served in Vietnam. This is a very important day. I think folks have said it really well, that we do need to remember that sacrifice that our fellow veterans make. Certainly have lots of family members in my family as well that were veterans, lucky enough that most of them have come home, including my dad, who was an Air Force veteran. Memorial Day also has a sad significance for me in that that's the day my mom passed away. My mom's not a veteran, my dad is, but my mom actually passed away on Memorial Day 14 years ago. On a lighter note, so I just want to take the opportunity to talk about Herndon High School Band, which will be traveling to Normandy next year on D-Day. So it's, next year will be the 75th anniversary of that really significant day in 1944 in World War II in France, and our band has been selected. It's a high honor to be selected, and I'm lucky enough to be joining them for that. So I think they're going to speak about it a little more later today, but looking forward to continuing to, I think Herndon's a really proud community, and we're certainly proud of our veterans, and again, happy to see so many of you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for all those comments. I concur fully, and it is so wonderful to see so many of you here this evening. We appreciate your sacrifice and what you've done, and especially those brothers and sisters that did not get to come back home. So we will keep all of them in our thoughts, especially this Monday. I would like to invite down all the members of the American Legion who are here, anyone who's currently or previously served in the armed forces, along with everyone here on the dais. So let's go down for the presentation. Thank you.
Mayor Merkel, council members, I won't take much time, because I don't think I can add to anything. I really appreciate your comments and all that you have said tonight, but more importantly, all your actions that you do throughout the year to support not only Post 184, but the veterans in this community. It's truly, it's truly, it's a part of your DNA, and I see it every time I interact, and I'm starting to learn everybody and try to interact better with the town council. Dave Kirby has taught me so much about how it works and who's who in the zoo, and I just really appreciate all that I've learned from you all. This weekend will begin the time when we will remember, and it will start with the poppies. We will be handing out poppies at select giants around here, so if you, anybody wants to donate, that's a great time. And it all goes to the veterans. We won't, we won't be using any of that funds. I have a raffle for the funds that fund our website and our storage, so if you want to buy a raffle ticket, come see me. We will do the Avenue of Flags, Lord Willin' and the Rain Holds Off, but if the rains are even tempted, I don't want to put 64 casket flags at risk. And then we will see you, you all, the whole town is invited, Monday at 10:00 a.m., and we will have our service that I'm just proud to be a part of. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kirby, you remembered your hat.
I did. Nobody had to bring it to me. I just want to bring up one, two little things that people in the audience may not realize, is that our mayor, Mayor Merkel, and our deputy mayor, our vice mayor, Ms. Baker, are both wearing poppy dresses, in respect for our poppy campaign. That will be held next week. So if we see somebody out there handing out poppies, the poppies are free. You can take one, but a $10 bill or a $20 bill will be more appreciated.
Oh, thank you, sir. Next is a proclamation to recognize Public Works Week, and I believe we have a PowerPoint to show of Big Truck Days here in a few minutes, and I will recognize the Vice Mayor Baker to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Public Works Week, May 20th through May 26th, 2018. The town of Herndon's Department of Public Works staff performs critical daily tasks involving water, sewer, street maintenance, and snow removal, solid waste and recycling management, stormwater, right-of-way inspections, traffic engineering, building, grounds, vehicle and equipment maintenance, engineering and site plan review, project management, and building inspections. Together with the community, our dedicated public works staff hosts Big Truck Days, community cleanup weeks, holiday decorations, leaf collection, and recycling events. The town's public work staff also provides key support during special events, including the Herndon Festival, Fourth of July Celebration, Friday Night Live, and Herndon Labor Day Festival. Because of the dedicated and efficient operations of the Department of Public Works, we have clean water, clean communities, safe streets and neighborhoods, and efficient traffic operations. Therefore, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through May 26th, 2018, as Public Works Week in the town of Herndon. Together with this year's theme, "The Power of Public Works," which emphasizes that infrastructure, facility, and services could not be provided without our public works professionals. Through the dedicated efforts of public works staff members, public works departments provide, maintain, and improve the structures and services that assure a better quality of life for our citizens. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, hereby, support the town's Department of Public Works and other organizations that seek to raise awareness about the importance of maintaining the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works, and acknowledge the hard work that they do each day to benefit our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from council? Sure. Madam Vice Mayor.
So thank you for, I was happy to get to read this proclamation tonight. I think this is, we have several, obviously, key departments within town. Public Works just happens to be a really visible department in town, right? Folks certainly pay attention and notice all the great work that they do, not to mention it's some of the friendliest staff, I think, that we have. They're so visible in the community. I, for one, I'm an avid walker, many of you know that, and a biker, but I walk a lot, and particularly in the mornings, and I see our staff, and whether they recognize me or not, usually I have my, I often have my Herndon cap on, right, and I don't even know if they recognize me. But regardless, they're always very nice, friendly with a wave, and there is just so much going on about town, especially right now with prepping for the Herndon Festival. But I just, I think we're really fortunate to have the public works team that we do in town, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Olem, I know you want to go next.
I love all of our departments, but public works is so visible, and if our trash didn't get picked up, we would definitely notice. If our leaves didn't get picked up. And when I've had friends move out of Herndon because they were looking for a different type of housing and they didn't find it, they usually tell me, oh, I really miss public works. So you're very visible, and I definitely appreciate all you do, and you kind of remind me of when you watch a football game or a hockey game, and they interview the players, and they always go, hi, Mom. Well, we always go, hi, public works, because we think you're the ones that take care of us, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs.
I also want to join everybody, and I know everybody else is going to say this in saying thank you so much. I know it's a very physically taxing job, and I also know that it's a very intellectually taxing job. I, myself, could never fix a water main or pave a highway, and I am super grateful to everybody who does. So thank you so much. You are most appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. McKinnon.
Echoing everyone else, what they're saying, I totally agree, and it's also the things that happen where, I call them Maylocks moments, where you have a sewer main break or something happened on the Herndon Parkway at 2:00 in the morning, and they're there, doing the job, rain, you know, rain, snow, or sleet, and when it's snowing especially, you know, making sure traffic is moving, doing the best they can to help people out. And then you have individuals, you know, one person especially here tonight, I know how much, how hard he works and what people think about him, and it's a very symbiotic relationship, and they're customer service focused, and you don't see that in government too much. And to have a group of people that cares so much about the town makes our job very, very easy up here in the dais, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
Department of Public Works is, like most people, one of our most visible departments, but there are so many unsung heroes who do things behind the scenes, above and beyond the call of duty, that you often don't hear about. We get to hear about them fairly frequently because we get the thank you notes, and we get to recognize folks. But here's to the men and women of DPW who not only do all the things they do to keep the town running, clean, safe, beautiful. I mean, after four days of the Herndon Festival, you walk out Monday morning, and it's like nothing happened. Those 150,000 people were never in town. But to the men and women who do the little things, like stop and help change a flat tire. I remember the first time I moved here was probably 18, 19 years ago, and I had a flat. I pulled up right in front of a Herndon florist, and I was getting ready to call my husband, and one of the water meter readers came over and said, ma'am, can I help you? I said, well, I've got a flat. I'm going to call my husband. He said, oh, I'll change that for you. So that's the kind of spirit that our Department of Public Works really embodies, and I want to thank them for their dedication to not just the job, not just the team, but to all the residents and the businesses here in the town. So this is well-served. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Almost not a week goes by when we don't receive an email or some kudos from someone in the community about something that someone in Department of Public Works has gone above and beyond. They know who has trouble getting their trash can down to the street, and they bring it up to the garage for them. They really put a personal touch on it, and they really care, and that is one of the things I'm most proud of in our town. So we thank all of you. There's a lot of you here this evening. We're going to call, call you guys all down, everybody from Department of Public Works. Tammy Chestane is here. She's our Deputy Director of Public Works, and her daughter Sierra is here, and she's going to have some words for us, a presentation, after we present you with the proclamation. So we're looking forward to hearing from you guys. Come on down. And I'm inviting everyone from the dais, of course. I neglected to mention that John Irish, who has recently been promoted to the Deputy Director of Public Works, is also here this evening. My apologies.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Town Council Members. My name is Sierra Chestane, and my mom works at DPW, and I had fun at Big Truck Days, where I gave the kids tattoos, and the guys helped keep the kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, and everyone in attendance. I want to say thank you for all your kind words. And actually, in the theme of the public works, the power of public works, one thing I would like to repeat to everyone that's listening or watching is that we work at the behest of the community and the public. So we always enjoy what we're doing because we're representing you to the people, and we continue to like to do that, and we hope the rest of the world does, too.
Thank you, sir. More comments? So glad Sierra finally spoke. I've been waiting and waiting for that. You did a great job, Sierra.
Better this than last time. Yeah, I can't really say any more than what you've already said, and John and Sierra. Thanks for the proclamation. I mean, it just shows your continued support for public works. And we provide, as you mentioned, many services for the town.
and worked on indoor swimming pools, outdoor swimming pools, and on a waterfront. And it is very important for us to teach our children to swim. I grew up in North Alabama where we had a lot of water, and you've never had a summer go by that someone had moved to a lakefront and their children didn't swim and they wandered out and drowned. So, it's so important to teach children how to swim, and we have great classes at the Herndon Community Center, and I hope you'll take advantage of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs.
I join my other, my fellow council members in emphasizing how important water safety is, both the cleanliness of the water and also being trained to save people who are drowning is tricky. Drowning is the number-two cause of accidental death in children ages 15 and under, just behind vehicle accidents. And of the approximately 752 children who will drown this year, about 375 of them will do so within 25 yards of a parent or adult. I almost drowned as a child. It's hard to tell when somebody's drowning sometimes, and the water safety training that the Herndon Community Center provides is a life-and-death situation, and I'm so grateful to them for their advocacy in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. We are really lucky to have the community center and the staff and the access to a pool. I will tell you a story about when I was three years old. So, my mom didn't know how to swim, so when I was three, she did, enrolled me in swimming classes along with my three-year-old neighbor, Timmy, and to make sure we got used to the water, they switched moms so that, because they didn't want to dunk their own kid. And so, Mrs. Murphy dunked me, and my mom dunked Timmy, and they're like, "Let's get used to the water." So, it was, but it was one of those great exposures of just my mom knowing, "I don't want my kid not to know how to swim," right? It's a really important safety measure, and again, we're just lucky to have that access proclamation tonight. to a pool and those resources, and we're lucky to have that here, and so thanks to This was actually done at your behest, so we appreciate the recognition that you've Public Works. given us for Water Safety Month. And I highly encourage that method. I don't know, it worked, so. It's critical, as you've all given examples of your experiences.
Thank you. I concur with our colleagues.
I think you remember back at the employee luncheon in December, we recognized some of
We have a lot of Parks and Rec representatives here this evening. I know that Cindy Roder's here, and I'll let her introduce some of her staff that has
our lifeguards for the rescue that they did in one of our fitness classes this past
accompanied us this evening, and I'll invite everyone down for the presentation.
fall, which is just one example of how they respond throughout the building, not just at the pool. I want to introduce Jim Heffel, who is our pool manager. He's going to just say a few words in regards to the --
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all very much for recognizing National Water Safety Month. I'm proud to represent our staff of well over 20 lifeguards and 30-plus instructors who provide swim programs for well over 500 members of our community, not to mention the numerous lap swimmers that we have and children and adults that recreate at our pool. We have a brand-new pirate ship float that I encourage everybody to come and visit, and this week alone, we trained over 20 lifeguards, and we're definitely gearing up for summer and hope to see you all there.
Thank you so much. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank council for taking time to recognize three of our departments this evening, and you do this so well. You had the police, I think, at the last public hearing, we recognized them, and to get through more tonight and the fine quality work they do each and every day, they make us all look good. I mean, that's where it happens, and I really appreciate you letting them know how much they're appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Friedrichs.
This has been an interesting week for me. I attended Metro Monday, the Chamber of Commerce's discussion of the new metro stations with Councilmember McKenna and former council member Richard Downer. Fascinating information, and I encourage you, if you have a chance to go there once a month, and they talk to all the businesses that are springing up and taking advantage of the metro, they're calling them nodes, the different metro stations along the Silver Line. Also, had the opportunity this morning to go to the Fairfax County Economic Advisory Committee on which I serve, and Herndon was a topic of discussion, the Smart Cities Initiative that's being moved forward by the county is also, we are taking part in that. We had a briefing from our town manager last week. So, lots of great stuff happening in Herndon. I also went to the Planning Commission last night and found out all about what's going on with Kmart, so this is a really great time to live in Herndon.
Thank you. Ms. Olem.
Wow, there's been a lot of interesting news. If you heard of LBJ, the past president, he had a daughter that got married when he was in the White House, and when she got married, she was in nursing school, and she had to decide, "Do you want to get married, or do you want to get your nursing degree?" So, she had to give up her nursing career because they didn't allow women to continue that were married. So, ladies, thank goodness that you're here at this day and time and didn't have to make that decision. Another thing I'm going to pass on to our town attorney were these people that came up with a B&amp;B to rent rooms in their house. I don't know if you saw that, but it scared me to death. We've had B&amp;B issues in town. They can have up to 12 people in this little tiny apartment. I don't think this is something we want to get excited about, and I hope we can look at what we can do to stop that type of thing from happening in Herndon, because I know it is already going on. And another shooting in Texas Friday, so if you want a gun, please lock it up, put it in a gun safe, don't keep the ammunition with the gun, just be, just be safe if you've got guns. When I was growing up, my grandfather had guns, because when my mom was growing up, if he didn't have a gun and could go hunting, they might not eat. So, he was a woodworker, and back in the '60s, he had his own gun safe. It was out of walnut, it was absolutely beautiful, but he kept it locked up, hid the key in another room, so that his shotguns were not available for any of the grandkids when we came over. So, please be responsible so that we don't have something like that happen in our area because someone left their guns out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, just a few things. First of all, I want to thank Cindy Roder for hosting the Herndon Youth Advisory Council at the community center a few weeks ago. Really good discussion on what can be done and things that they're interested in, so really appreciate all your efforts that you put in to make that happen, so thank you for that. I also want to thank the Virginia Municipal League Executive Board for selecting me to be part of their planning committee for this year's 2018 conference. It's a group that'll mold, help mold the agenda in regards to what we'll be talking about in the legislative, in the next legislative agenda for 2000, it'll be 2019 now. So, if there's any suggestions in regards to what you think we should be talking about, both on the dais and in the audience, definitely would like to hear those comments, appreciate that. You, Councilwoman Friedrichs, explained about Metro Monday. I do want to also thank President and CEO of the Dulles Chamber, John Boylan, he's been doing an amazing job in regards to not just that, but with the Herndon Chamber of Commerce being proactive and being really great. And then, sorry, Barbara Kalikas, I'm going to take this from you, but the Herndon Historical Society meeting, we'll be meeting tomorrow at the Herndon Depot on Lynn Street at 7:00 PM. It's free and open to the public. The guest speaker will be Doug Greeney, a Herndon High School teacher who wrote the book, "American Teacher Adventure in the Classroom and Our Nation's Capital." So, again, thank you for letting me know that, but I wanted to let everyone know about that, and of course, we have the Memorial Day Remembrance at Chestnut Grove Cemetery. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you. I want to give a shout-out to Parks and Recs and A1 Bicycle Shop in Herndon for Bike To Work Day last Friday. It was soggy, but we had 500-plus registrants who did register for the day. I don't know how many bikers, cyclists actually showed up, but I stopped by in the morning, and the pit stop was actually very well-attended and got my Bike To Work t-shirt, and it was nice to see a good, strong cycling community out there, and so thank you to Parks and Recs and A1 Cycling. And for those of you who didn't get a chance to participate, it's in May every year, so take a look, it's a great day to get on your bike. The other thing I wanted to point out is the town calendar competition is now open. We are now accepting photographs for photographs taken in the town of Herndon that depict all ages, all people, all seasons, and all events. You can find out more about the contest by looking at either Art Space Herndon's website or the town's website. Entries are due June 8. And I implore you, anybody I think the age of 16 and up, cell phone cameras work. The photo that's on the budget brochure was submitted by me last year and was taken, literally, a snapshot over at Public Works on my cellphone. So, they're wonderful photo opportunities, so dig out your cameras and send in your submissions.
Thank you. And Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes. This Sunday, so lots going on, as always, in Herndon, so this Sunday, Rolling Thunder starts at Jimmy's at 10:00 AM, or at least --
It's 9:00 AM.
Or it's 9:00 AM now?
He texted me the name.
Okay, good. So, 9:00 AM. And of course, that's a tribute to our veterans. Rolling Thunder is, they go downtown, really, there's events downtown all weekend from Friday to Monday, but Sunday, if you have never seen that, it is, it's fun to witness, and so thank you to Jimmy for organizing that, and of course, having an event all day on Sunday. Of course, we talked about Monday, hope to see you all at Chestnut Grove at 10:00. I think everyone knows about the Herndon Festival next weekend, and again, really thankful for our new sponsor, Northwest Federal, and we'll talk more about that with what we have coming up with them for next year, but given that this is our last year and our iconic downtown, I hope we see a lot of, a lot of folks come to our festival this year, particularly if you have kids. There are so many fun kid events at the festival this year, as always. And then, one more thing, the HCTV, right, Herndon Community Television, they are having an open house at Jimmy's on Sunday, June 10. We don't have another public hearing until then, so I just wanted to mention that. Sunday, June 10 from 1:00 to 4:00 at Jimmy's. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I will just add that on Memorial Day, our town offices, of course, will be closed, and if your regular refuse pickup is on Monday, please put your hands out on Tuesday, because DPW will be doing double duty and make sure they get all of the, all of those, all of those things picked up. And yeah, that's all I've got. So, next is the portion of the agenda for, reserved for comments from the audience on any item that's not a public hearing item. First, I'm going to recognize representatives from Northwest Federal Credit Union who are here this evening. They have some comments for us on the general item, authorizing the town manager to sign an MOU to host the Herndon Festival, so welcome, we're glad to have you here.
Yeah, there we go. So, I'll keep it to an hour, I know we're in a tight schedule tonight. What a wonderful night, all the recognition and things that are going on in town, so this was fun to watch it, and it's great to see all the appreciation. My name's Jeff Bentley, for those I haven't met, I'm the president and CEO of Northwest Federal, and I'd like to thank the mayor and town council for considering Northwest to host the 2019 Herndon Festival. So, we're super excited, and I don't know how much you know about Northwest, but we're right, our headquarters is on the corner of Spring and Herndon Parkway. As credit unions go, there are a little over 5,000 credit unions in the country, and asset signs, we're in the top 50, so we're a pretty big deal when it comes to credit unions, which means for you that we've got a lot of money to lend, we've got a lot of products, and we love partnering with our community here in Herndon. We've been here for over 70 years, and hopefully you see a lot of our employees, we have over 500 employees, and we have committed to 5,000 hours of volunteer time, all of that going, hopefully, to the nonprofits right here locally. So, we are big, big supporters of this community. So, with that, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that it is our privilege to serve the residents of the town of Herndon, and we are so excited to host the festival in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. We are thrilled. So, this is the portion of the agenda reserved for comments from the audience on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. That does include general items, consent items, or anything else that's on your mind that you'd like to bring to the council's attention. Please state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes to speak, and when the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. I know there are several people that would like to speak this evening. Yes, sir?
Alan Trong.
Come on down to the podium.
My name is Alan Trong, and I live at 611 Merle's Lane. I am a current drum major for the Pride of Herndon Band. June 1944, the servicemen of America, Canada, and Britain stormed the beaches of Normandy to secure freedom for France and the free world. Leading this invasion was the USS Herndon, DD 638. In 2013, the Pride of Herndon won grand champions at the parade for Pearl Harbor for the remembrance of the attack on our nation. Based on that performance, we have been --
This Sunday, so lots going on as always in Herndon. So this Sunday, Rolling Thunder starts at Jimmy's at 10:00 AM or at least.
It's 9:00 AM.
Or it's 9:00 AM now?
He texted me the name.
Okay, good. So 9:00 AM. And of course, that's a tribute to our veterans. Rolling Thunder is, they go downtown. Really, there's events downtown all weekend from Friday to Monday. But Sunday, if you have never seen that, it is, it's fun to witness. And so thank you to Jimmy for organizing that and of course, having an event all day on Sunday. Of course, we talked about Monday, hope to see you all at Chestnut Grove at 10 o'clock. I think everyone knows about the Herndon Festival next weekend. And again, really thankful for our new sponsor, Northwest Federal. And we'll talk more about that with what we have coming up with them for next year. But given that this is our last year and our iconic downtown, I hope we see a lot of, a lot of folks come to our festival this year, particularly if you have kids. There are so many fun kid events at the festival this year as always. And then one more thing, the HCTV, right, Herndon Community Television, they are having an open house at Jimmy's on Sunday, June 10th. We don't have another, another public hearing until then, so I just wanted to mention that. Sunday, June 10th from 1:00 to 4:00 at Jimmy's. Thanks. Thank you very much. I will just add that on Memorial Day, our town offices, of course, will be closed. And if your regular refuse pickup is on Monday, please put your hands out on Tuesday because TPW will be doing double duty and make sure they get all of the, all of those, all of those things picked up. And yeah, that's all I've got. So next is the portion of the agenda for, reserved for comments from the audience on any item that's not a public hearing item. First, I'm going to recognize Representatives from Northwest Federal Credit Union who are here this evening. They have some comments for us on the general item, authorizing the town manager to sign an MOU to host the Herndon Festival. So welcome, we're glad to have you here.
Got me?
There you go.
Yeah, there we go. So I'll keep it to an hour. I know we're in a tight schedule tonight. What a wonderful night, all the recognition and things that are going on in town. So this was fun to, to watch it and it's great to see all the appreciation. My name's Jeff Bentley. For those I haven't met, I'm the President and CEO of Northwest Federal. And I'd like to thank the mayor and town council for considering Northwest to host the 2019 Herndon Festival. So we're super excited. And I don't know how much you know about Northwest, but we're right, our headquarters is on the corner of Spring and Herndon Parkway. As credit unions go, there are a little over 5,000 credit unions in the country and asset signs, we're in the top 50. So we're a pretty big deal when it comes to credit unions, which means for you that we've got a lot of money to lend, we've got a lot of products, and we love partnering with our community here in Herndon. We've been here for over 70 years and hopefully you see a lot of our employees. We have over 500 employees and we have committed to 5,000 hours of volunteer time. All of that going hopefully to the nonprofits right here locally. So we are big, big supporters of this community. So with that, I just wanted to, to make sure everyone understood that it is our privilege to serve the residents of the town of Herndon. And we are so excited to host the festival in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next weekend.
Thank you, sir. We are thrilled. So this is the portion of the agenda reserved for comments from the audience on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. That does include general items, consent items, or anything else that's on your mind that you'd like to bring to the council's attention. Please state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes to speak. And when the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. I know there are several people that would like to speak this evening. Yes, sir?
Alan Trong.
Come on down to the podium.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alan Trong and I live at 611 Merle's Lane. I am a current drum major for the Pride of Herndon Band. June 1944, the servicemen of America, Canada, and Britain stormed the beaches of Normandy to secure freedom for France and the free world. Leading this invasion was the USS Herndon DD 638. In 2013, the Pride of Herndon won grand champions at the parade for Pearl Harbor for the remembrance of the attack on our nation. Based on that performance, we have been selected to perform at the final reunion for survivors of D-Day in Normandy on June 9, June 6, 19, 2019. As we perform in Normandy, each one of our students will carry a picture of the service members that were on the USS Herndon. This trip helps our, the younger, will help the younger generations remember our nation's history and they will remember how freedom is not free. And they will remember the sacrifices of all our service members that died overseas and everything that this country has done for the liberties of other people. In terms of service members, I've had, personally, I have had two uncles serve in the military, one of which did not have the chance to go home. And me personally, I am, after I graduated high school, I am going into the Marine Corps. So this trip means a lot to me because I'm willing to go out and serve my nation and I am going to help honor the men, the men that died on the beach that fateful day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Sarah Tremino. Do you still need my address?
Yes, please.
All right. I live at 521 Florida Avenue, Apartment 103. And as you know, this trip is a big deal for us. It's just as important as the Hawaii trip we recently had. And thanks to many members of the community and we were able to go to that trip about four years ago. And now we ask for your help, the council and the community again, to help us fund for this Normandy trip. Every donation, no matter what size, counts. We have many different ways in which you can contribute to our band. Weekly, we have our No Cook Tuesdays in which a select restaurant contributes a certain portion of donations to our band to offset the costs. We also have, we also have the Bike-A-Thon, which I think some of you have heard about and in which we are looking for sponsors for our students. And we would appreciate any, any type of help we could get. Moreover, what we're also about to talk about is the Pops concert that's coming up on June 3rd, 7:30 PM, 7:30 PM. We're at Herndon High School in our auditorium. We're hoping to have a full house because this is one of our, hopefully, one of our big fundraisers. Thanks to the community as well, our fundraiser at the Town Green, the concert was a huge success. So thank you again. And we, so we also have like, from once in a while, we'll have like some miscellaneous fundraisers. And if you'd like, like to know more about it, it's on our Facebook page, Pride of Herndon Band. And, but other than that, like, we're currently so appreciative of what all of you guys have done. And at the rate that we have, we can definitely ensure that this will be something that every student can enjoy. Because at the moment, the projected cost for each student is about $3,000 and we have about 150 students attending. So as, it's a lot of money, but a lot of students have difficulty paying these prices. And I for one was one of those students that had difficulty every year paying these prices. But thanks to generous donations, I was able to represent our band at every trip that we went to. And so I, I believe that we can do this. So I ask you guys to please get the word out and encourage people and local businesses around us to support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Shannon O'Day and my address is 1326 Chalaford Road. I'm going to be speaking today in behalf of Jacob Reeves, who cannot be here today. I graduated in the class of 2017 from Herndon. I did four years of marching band, four years of wind ensemble. This is my third year with Jacob doing his Pops Ensemble, which is actually the big fundraiser that Harold was able to mention. So Jacob was able to gather 60 students, both alumni and current students, to create a combination of 60 people to create a family-friendly environment with music selections from The Music Man, Hunchback, Notre Dame, La La Land, and a couple of others like Les Mis. The concert is entirely student-run and it's also completely volunteer-based. So none, nothing that we're doing is with any school-related motive or there's no extra incentive. Everyone that's there is there because they want to play the music. And Jacob is there for the experience and to be able to really like give back to the community, even though he has graduated from Herndon High School. He always strives to make Herndon High School itself and Herndon a better place. All donations will go to offset the Normandy trip for the Herndon High School students. So we'd like to ask for your support for donations and also just going to the concert. It's going to be really fun, June 3rd at the Herndon High School Auditorium. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on any item? Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name's Rob Morris and I live at 701 Nash Street, right up here off of Spring Street. My wife and I have lived here in the town for approximately 23 years now. And the main reason I'm down here tonight is to try to offer a couple of possible solutions to the traffic on Spring Street, specifically what we call Spring Street Business. And a couple of things that I was looking at that I came up with are probably some of the, two of the best things that, that could be implemented, yet also probably some of the cheapest as well. So that's always nice. One is more visual related, the second is a little more physically related to slow cars down. But the first one would be each street from Spring on down towards the town to offer a pedestrian crossing. Not anything mechanical, but if you look at the big, wide, white lines that are used at a lot of these intersections to allow people to cross, along with the signage, we have three other streets that people would be able to, as they negotiate down Spring Street, would kind of cause them to pay a little more attention to what they're doing and obviously, hopefully, abiding by the speed limit. The town did a great job many, many years ago. 25 is the right speed, just like it is on some of the other residential streets here in the town of Herndon. And in a perfect world, we wouldn't need to do anything. But unfortunately, with the growth, you know, the town is a wonderful place for everyone to come now. With the advertising, the restaurant campaign, and all the wonderful things Herndon has to offer, we've noticed a lot more congestion coming down through the center of town. I'm not against that. It's just that I'm trying to figure out, how are we going to do this in the best way to keep people around the speed limit? And since we've been there the last 23 years, you can go out right now, this, this evening, husbands and wives, kids, people walking their dogs up and down our sidewalks, that's increased probably tenfold, which is great. I mean, we have one breed of dog for every family we see every night walking up and down the street. And they come across, and for, for the most part, they can get across, but we're looking at the future of what Spring Street's going to be like. And I'm more concerned about everyone's safety, especially with what has just happened at May 6th. I hope everyone's going to be okay after that accident as well. And from there on, I'm sure you'll be reviewing a lot of this. I've got some other ideas that I won't take up your time with tonight, with physical barriers, how to implement them. And the one caveat we have is our fire department. We don't want to reduce any time. Seconds lead to minutes and minutes, minutes lead to, you know, people's lives being saved. And that's probably the one thing that supersedes everything we're talking about tonight. So pedestrian crossing, I think, would be good to slow people down. And then we can also install possible, those little wake-up as you go through some of these toll booths you see out of state where you hit them and they vibrate a little bit. So those are very simple measures, I think, that would cause a lot of people, because it would break the traffic up coming down the street as well, without putting the big speed bumps in at this point. And lastly, I'll say our law enforcement has done a great job over the years. Just their presence rotating around has done, done a wonderful job. I just think that people still tend to want to speed even though they're there, so.
Thank you, sir. I hope you'll send us an email with additional ideas that you have so we can pass it along to the appropriate staff.
Absolutely. I'd love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item this evening? Anyone? Okay, thank you very much. So that does bring us to our public hearings. The first item is Resolution 18G-20, which was the special exception to permit a barber shop and hair salon within an office condominium. And as I mentioned earlier, the applicant has submitted a letter to withdraw this application, which we've entered into the record. And so therefore, the council will forego the public hearing and not take action on this item. So next up is Ordinance 18015, to authorize the encroachment of a building overhang support column into the Spring Street right-of-way at 697 Spring Street. I'll open the public hearing and recognize John Irish for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. This ordinance is to authorize the encroachment of a building overhang support column into the Spring Street right-of-way at 697 Spring Street owned by Kernis Herndon LLC. The basis of this ordinance is to take into account a support column that is holding up the corner of an outside canopy. It's a egress canopy area for what is known as Jimmy's Tavern. It is in what became a right-of-way, which was not previously so. When the Streetscape Phase 2 project was initiated, there were some right-of-way modifications that needed to be made to accommodate that work. And in the process of making those amendments, there was consequently also a construction project being conducted and permitted by the town for that same property. Because of the time lags and timing, it ended up that the support column, which was permitted, ended up in what would become a right-of-way. That right-of-way actually was a result, the change of the right-of-way was a result of a gift for, from Jimmy's to, or from Kernis Herndon to the town. So this now has created a condition where the support column is in the right-of-way and this is going to allow that to stay in place as it is.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions from council? Okay. Thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing, so I would like to invite the applicant or applicant's agent forward if they would like to speak. I don't know if they're here. Okay. Then I will call on comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Same as before, up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Cunningham.
Madam Mayor, I'll move Ordinance 18015.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Discussion on the motion. Anyone? All right. So seeing no discussion, I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. Next up is Resolution 18G-23, to approve a temporary license agreement for public space in the alley adjacent to Jimmy's Old Town Tavern for outdoor seating. And I'll open the public hearing and recognize Lisi Yates, our town attorney, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution approves a temporary license agreement which grants Jimmy's Old Town Tavern to conduct three events in what is commonly known as the alley behind Jimmy's and along Spring Street. Typically, council has, and most recently approved these events and granted a license on a case-by-case basis. Our zoning ordinance allows three special events per year. And so we are trying to be efficient and have the council approve all three of these in, in the one license. So the business has submitted the applications, has been approved for the May 27th. It looks like they will be approved for the September 2nd and September 30th. And we would ask that you grant that license to Jimmy's Old Town Tavern to use the alley for that, those one-day events on the dates indicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for the town attorney? Okay. So this is a public hearing, so I would, if the applicant or applicant's agent is here, which I don't think they are, you can come forward. And if not, then we will open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move 18G-23.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, I want to thank staff for being efficient and putting these all together. They have, Jimmy's Old Town Tavern has been doing these events for years. They're, they're almost a mainstay, not quite as long as the Friday Night Live or the festival, but they've been here a long time. So thank you for doing that and making it more efficient.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Anyone else? No, we would certainly like to do what we can to help our local businesses. So if there is any, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next up is an ordinance, 18016, to vacate a portion of the Vine Street right-of-way. This is related to our downtown redevelopment project. And I'll open the public hearing and recognize Michael Wallach for the staff report. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Tonight, we are going to discuss the vacation of a portion of Vine Street right-of-way. And referencing the, the aerial that's in the packet, the portion of Vine Street proposed to be vacated is located between Center Street and the WOD Trail. It is included in the downtown redevelopment site. And the downtown redevelopment site is located west of the WOD Trail and Station Street, north of Eldon Street, and east of Center Street. It includes a majority of land within that downtown block with the exception of the Ice House Cafe Building and the Herndon Commerce Center directly to the east. The subject portion of Vine Street right-of-way is located between Art Space Herndon, which is located to the north, and the downtown public parking lot, which is directly located to the south. The town does own the land both north and south of the portion of Vine Street right-of-way proposed to be vacated. Comstock Herndon Venture LLC and the town of Herndon have entered into a comprehensive agreement to redevelop the 4.675-acre downtown Herndon site. And the vacation of a portion of Vine Street right-of-way is one of the conditions to closing for Comstock to acquire the downtown property. The property would be vacated as Outlaw A, which is 15,048 square feet. And just to recap, the downtown redevelopment proposal by Comstock, Comstock is proposing to build three blocks with 281 apartment units, 17,600 square feet of retail, and 18,000 square foot art center, a parking structure with 761 parking spaces with 162 reserved for the public, three public plazas and a patio, as well as an arts walk. The downtown redevelopment site is located within the town's Heritage Preservation District. And all three of the blocks would have residential, with ground floor residential on Blocks A and B. Block A would have a residential courtyard and a pool, and Block A would be all residential. Block B and C would have retail, and Block C would have the art center and a 200-seat theater. And Block C would have residential above the first floor. Vine Street is proposed to remain a two-way vehicular access point for the proposed parking garage, and a second exit point would be located further south on Center Street. There would also be another two-way access drive over off Station Street and with possible connection from the downtown redevelopment site to the WOD Trail, and also a fountain or art feature within the pedestrian art walk. The portion of Vine Street that is proposed to be vacated, again, is 15,048 square feet. It's a 50-foot-wide right-of-way and it's approximately 275 feet in length. Within the right-of-way, there's a 10-foot water service easement. Within the right-of-way, there's a 10-foot water service easement, a 10-foot storm drainage easement, and a storm drainage and sanitary sewer easement at variable width. The downtown redevelopment site is comprised of 11 parcels, and again, that does not include the Ice House Cafe or the Hernan Commerce Center just to the east. The comprehensive plan and the downtown master plan supports downtown redevelopment, and on May 27, 2014, Town Council rezoned this portion of Vine Street and the abutting parcels to PDTD, which is Plan Development Traditional Downtown. The conceptual plan within the comprehensive agreement requires pedestrian and vehicular connections throughout the downtown block and throughout the parking garage. And the staff finds that the vacation of the subject portion of Vine Street right-of-way is in accordance with state code, the town's 2030 comprehensive plan, the downtown master plan, and the downtown pattern book. And staff is recommending preservation of the easements located within the right-of-way. The Planning Commission public hearing was held on May 7, 2018, and a resolution indicating that the vacation of Vine Street right-of-way is consistent with the comprehensive plan was approved. There were no questions or comments heard by the commissioners at the Planning Commission public hearing, and the Planning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote of seven to zero. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions of staff? Ms. Friedrichs.
That's very comprehensive. Is there any reason why the right-of-way wasn't included in the agreement with Comstock? Is there some technical reason?
Mr. Town Manager.
It is included.
Okay.
But because you have right-of-way there, they can't build on the right-of-way. So, we have to vacate the right-of-way so that then they can go ahead and build.
Thank you both. Other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. So, this is a public hearing, so I'll call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item, the vacation of Vine Street? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Friedrichs.
Is this the appropriate time to move for approval?
Yep.
Oh, wow. All right. I move approval of Ordinance 18016 to vacate a portion of Vine Street right-of-way.
Second. Discussion on the motion made by Ms. Friedrichs, seconded by Ms. Olem. Ms. Friedrichs.
Seems like a no-brainer.
Ms. Olem.
Yes, if we don't do this, I think that's the end of the deal. So, I'm looking forward to seeing it moved through, because we can't build on the middle of the highway.
Other discussion. Mr. McKenna.
I just think it's good for, not only that, but also housekeeping purposes, because in my prior life on council, there's been building on places where there was fire roads and easements, and it can be a logistical nightmare in regards to trying to overlap and see things. So, I appreciate community development, everything else, getting everything synchronized, so we have everything so that the tax maps and everything are copacetic. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? I think Ms. Olem said it well. So, we've known this was going to be something we had to vacate for years with this agreement. So, if there's no further discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much. I believe this is our last public hearing. This is Resolution 18G24, to authorize VDOT to proceed to the detailed design phase of the East Spring Street widening and improvements project and the transmittal of related town comments. As I announced earlier, staff is recommending that we continue this public hearing to June 12 to allow additional discussion at our next work session. There's a lot of community interest in this as well. Comments received on this item have been entered into the record. I'll open the public hearing, and I believe I'm calling on Mark Deuceman for the staff report. I couldn't find you. There you are.
I don't see the presentation, so I'll just go right to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of Town Council. The resolution as proposed is to give guidance to VDOT staff as to the desired design details associated with the town's East Spring Street project, so that the project can move forward onto final engineering. The location of the East Spring Street project includes the Hernan Parkway and Spring Street intersection, and onto the town limits near the on-off ramps of the Fairfax County Parkway interchange. And the project extends along Hernan Parkway from the WOD Trail to the traffic circle east of Fairbrook Drive. The general scope of the project is based on the design direction of the town's adopted Hernan Metro Rail study in order to accommodate added density in the Hernan transit-oriented core. Specifically, the scope of the project is to widen East Spring Street from four-lane divided to six-lane divided from Hernan Parkway to town limits, and to provide for additional turning lane capacity, to close the median on Spring Street, and add an eight-foot cycle track from the WOD Trail to the traffic circle along the south side of Hernan Parkway, which is to eventually reach Hernan Metro Rail Station. Staff is recommending a continuance until the public hearing of June 12 to allow for additional public input tonight, and time to transmit to VDOT the town's resolution providing the town's design guidance on or before Friday, June 15. And I welcome any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions for Mr. Deuceman at this time? Okay. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, so I know we have some interested parties here in the audience. Please state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes. Please try to wrap up when the red light comes on. Who would like to come down and speak first?
Well, I'll leave it off.
Oh!
I don't want to preempt you, folks.
Well played, Mr. Fairfield.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Fairfield, and my business address is 459 Hernan Parkway and the Parkway Crossing Office Condominiums. I'm also the president of the Unit Owners Association, and I'm so delighted that you're going to continue this to June 12, because our next meeting is June 12, and I'll try to bring a resolution on that evening supporting this particular project. This is obviously an improvement that is required. You're going to have significant traffic congestion on East Spring Street if we don't have additional capacity. But we've got some potential problems there, and it's primarily at the entrance off of Hernan Parkway, which is now going to serve four properties. All the users in the business park, our office building, the Tuac Condo Master Lee property, and then the two hotels that are going to come in the back. And even though you may leave the most eastern egress and ingress to the park open, the one closest to Fairfax County Parkway, most, if not all, of the vehicle trips are going to be forced through that front entrance. It's my understanding that the design of that front entrance with the cul-de-sac and the landscaping in the center of it is decades old, and I think it would benefit from some revisiting. Now, I know it's beyond the scope of this project, but I would certainly encourage town staff to consider reanalysis of the design of that entrance. And I've told staff in the past that if, through that process, it became evident that some additional right-of-way would be helpful, I'm certainly willing to start that conversation with our unit owners in the office building, because we have a fairly generous landscape buffer. And then the last thing is, obviously, we support the investigation of the acceleration of a traffic signal somewhere along Hernan Parkway. It can be at our front door, or it can be up at Fairbrook Drive if you decide to disengage that from the timing of the development of the Fairbrook property. So, that's it in a nutshell, and that's all I wanted to say for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who else would like to come forward and speak on this item? Don't be shy.
Mayor and members of the council, I am the owner of Auto Scandia, 134 Spring Street. I am also the owner of Units 265 and 291 in the Sunset Business Park. I'm also a member of the master board of the Sunset Business Park. I'm here tonight representing the business owners of the park, the various groups, the owners, the tenants, the, excuse me, I guess that's the end of that group. The, and I apologize, I'm a little nervous as well. I'm not much for public speaking. I just want to say that I've been in the park since 1983, and I've had almost four decades to observe the traffic coming in and out of the park. The gateway to the park is the Spring Street entrance. I dare say half the business enters the park through that median that's going to be closed. I know that this is going to be potentially very bad for a lot of the businesses along Spring Street. Some of them will be losing a fair number of their customers. It's going to be bad for me as the owner of Auto Scandia, because we make U-turns currently at the median and also at Fairfax County Parkway. I've been thinking about this for easily 20 years, because the town has been talking about closing the median for probably about that long. I have, since day one, felt that allowing U-turns at the Spring Street-Hernan Parkway intersection, as well as continuing to allow U-turns at Fairfax County Parkway and Spring Street, is the simplest and most elegant solution to a myriad of problems that will be created when that median closes. To the town's credit, they have come around somewhat to my way of thinking, and they have modified several things. One that I asked for that doesn't benefit me directly, but benefits the business owners in the park, is leaving all entrances to the park open. We appreciate that very much. The other is that they are currently planning on allowing U-turns at the Hernan Parkway and Spring Street interchange, but they're restricting those. I'm here tonight to say that I would ask that they not restrict those, and that they allow those as they do with the Fairfax County Parkway interchange to be unlimited, 24/7. I make probably more U-turns than anyone else in that particular section of the Spring Street, and I can tell you that they're controlled, they're slow, and they're safe. They don't jeopardize pedestrians, they don't create traffic problems, and frankly, it's much safer than the median.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward? State your name and address for the record. It could be your business address, of course.
Town Forest, 249 Sunset Park Drive. I've operated my business out of there until I sold it, and now I have renters in that property. I think all of us in the Sunset Business Park are concerned about if the access to the park is reduced, that we're going to suffer some damages in terms of loss of property value, and for those who are still operating their businesses there, loss of business. We've even had some who have expressed at the VDOT meetings, et cetera, that they think that they're going to have to leave. Dunkin' Donuts, for one, mentioned that they thought they would have to move. Several others have expressed sort of the same point of view. Members of the business park have attended the planning meetings and made a number of suggestions intended to help mitigate the damages that we see coming to the park. Particularly with the addition of a 250-room hotel, the traffic concerns are going to only grow. We were definitely encouraged and appreciative that a few of those things were accepted and were talked about by VDOT, but unfortunately, they were the easiest to accept, and they'll have the least effect of all the things that we asked. We don't feel our interests are really being fully served when that type of impact is going to happen to commercial. You had mentioned earlier that you really want to help small businesses. Here's an opportunity. You know, and I think if you don't help us here, it's not going to help our businesses, for sure. They tell us the lights being considered a little further up where the circle is, the other entrance, and we were encouraged to hear that, but we were discouraged to hear that that was a multi-year process. So, for the small businesses that suffer the damages initially, by the time that comes around, those guys are going to be long gone. So, that, you know, it's a good thing, but we'd like to see that accelerated. Some people have made some additional suggestions about improving signage, such as the entrance there, so that Sunset Park Drive is better identified. This will help out people that are going with their apps or whatever and trying to find it. Some people have problems doing that. So, you know, that would be a simple and cheap additional thing that could be done. So, anyway, those are just some of the things. I know we mentioned the U-turns, the lights, and the Fairbrook Parkway entrance was discussed, but all of those things were shot down for various reasons. So, we're concerned about our future. We'd appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Hi. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Remember me?
I do.
Nice to see all of you. Thanks for listening to us. And as he just mentioned, you do want to help small business. I know you do. You came to our store and did a ribbon cutting for us when we had our 30-year anniversary. It meant a lot to us. It really helped. It helped our business. It got publicity. This will have the opposite effect. This, closing off the ability to turn into our shopping center from Spring Street can be very detrimental. There are, there's not signage right now. All it says is Sunset Business Park. It's sort of a discreet location. If you don't know what's in there, you don't venture in there. But what's nice is you have businesses like Dunkin' Donuts and other food shops that have gained recognition and popularity, and people come by to get a bowl of soup at the soup place, or to get Dunkin' Donuts, get a cup of coffee, and then they notice the other businesses in the park. Dunkin' Donuts, if that goes away, and it very well might, people will just go on to 7-Eleven. They'll keep driving down Spring Street. There will be a lot fewer people who will recognize, who will discover the other businesses that are in the park, and we rely on that publicity. So, I've asked plenty of our customers. We have a furniture business, outdoor furniture and hot tubs, and I'd say a very significant portion of our business comes from people just coming into the park for a cup of coffee or for dinner and saying, "Oh, I didn't even know you were here." And this is not going to, this will make matters much worse. So, one way to mitigate that, as you just mentioned, is through more signage. In the perfect world, we would not close the median. If that's not possible, make U-turns easy and available at all times. And whatever we can do to just keep our small businesses alive, we're all essentially, I think, mom-and-pop businesses in that store, in that shopping center. We're not big-box stores. We can't afford to have people not discovering us. We don't have big budgets for marketing. So, this will hurt. Whatever you can do to help us, we would appreciate. I know signage, I think there are some ordinances about what we can do now. If there's any way we might be able to make some exceptions to that, that would certainly help. If you would consider that, we'd be very grateful. And whatever else you can do, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Alex Lichenson. I work at Home Escapes in Offenbacher's, 292 Sunset Park Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am.
Everybody, my name is Olga Gonzalez, and I'm the owner of 305 Sunset Business Park, a Capital Electric. As you, as all my, all other owners agree, this is going to hurt our business a lot. In my case, I have trucks, big trucks doing deliveries, 18-wheelers. Just the turning in and out of the complex is complicated. The roundabout, the only option in my case that they're giving us is the roundabout. It's not going to happen for my trucks or for the deliveries. I have really big trucks coming in and out, and they're not going to be able to maneuver. So, I am agreeing with all the owners, but in this case, no signage, not even on the back, because the back of the building, the Sunset Business Park, is, people think that they're getting into a hotel, so nobody's going there. There is no signage again, and in my case, that'll be it so far. Thank you, Olga.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item?
I'd like to also speak on behalf of a couple of other businesses that signed the petition.
Okay, certainly. Yes, sir. We did receive the email today.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that, and I haven't had time, I tried to get as many signatures as I can today, but everybody wants to talk about this, which frankly, I fully understand. Uh, people have moved from panic to deep concern with the changes that have been made. Um, the Marriott is very interested in seeing these U-turns. Currently, the Marriott cannot turn left out of their entrance, I'm not sure if you know that.
Mm-hmm.
So, they cannot, they cannot go back on Spring Street towards Reston or to get on to the Dulles Toll Road to get to the airport. Okay? Um, Chris Burns at Marriott has asked that I represent him and that, uh, his opinion is that the U-turns would be, uh, a boon to his business and would prevent, uh, would avoid the need for his drivers to drive through the Hampton Suites parking lot and make U-turns in front of the Herndon Police Station, which is less than ideal, I'll say that from my own experience. Um, I'd like to speak on my, on behalf of my own company, which I've done, I'd also like to speak on behalf of the, uh, the businesses within the park. I know many of those owners, there's probably about 100 affected people within that park. You have owners of the units, their tenants, their families, all of these people are affected, a 5% to 10% loss of business for them, for many of them would be devastating. A 50% loss of business would simply be unsustainable. And what we're talking about, in my opinion, is loss of about 50% of the vehicular traffic entering the park through the median. I think the U-turns would solve the problem, I don't think the, uh, traffic issues that that would create are unsurmountable or insurmountable, and I believe that there are ways that the median, not the median, but the, well, I guess it is the median, could be moved back so it doesn't interfere with the traffic crossing Spring Street. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, thank you, seeing none. Um, the public hearing remains open and I will ask for a motion to continue, um, to a date certain of June 12th. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move to continue eighteen, Resolution 18G24. Until the next public hearing.
Until 12th, yeah.
June 12th.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue made by Ms. Olem, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on the motion, anyone?
Yes.
Yes, this is a very complicated issue. I have been frequenting your shopping center for years, um, and, and finally figured out how to go in and out, just where the roundabout thing is, uh, by Taekwondo Place, uh, because I can go that way easily, so I've been trying to train myself, but if I didn't know that and I were coming there, even, uh, next stop, Industrial Strength Theater is going to be greatly impacted because same thing, uh, as well as all of the, the folks there, so, um, I'm glad that we can continue this and hope we can come out with something more equitable. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'd agree, this is a really unique piece of property, really in all of Fairfax County. There's not a lot of, um, these types of units that are available to small business owners, so we recognize that, that, that it's unique. Um, it's certainly a place I frequent often as a customer, um, not only, um, I have, and I have two personal friends who own units in, in the park, so I've certainly heard lots about, um, the changes, I've been to several of the DOT meetings, so, um, we are, we are, um, I'm certainly on board with how important this is to get this right as, and as best as that can be, right? Um, because unfortunately, as I think you've acknowledged, unfortunately, the closing of the median, I think we're past that, right, that that is going to happen. Um, and so now it's about making sure that the U-turn and that that's accessible, um, restricted, not restricted, all those types of things that we're working with DOT and with staff to, to work out the best solution there. Um, I'm also the Chair of Pback, which is the Pedestrian Bike Advisory Committee, so I'll only mention that because, of course, a big focus of Pback is to figure out safe routes to the metro, right? So, we've been working for years with staff's help to, to look at that, and of course, this came up at our last Pback meeting a couple of weeks ago, so we looked at the, the DOT map and the changes, um, and also discussed the potential U-turn, and so it, you know, the Pback members were also advocating for that, uh, as seeing that as a, as a really necessary, um, component to making this, if you are going to, if you have to close the median, we at least have to have the, the U-turn, um, as an accessible way to, to get to that really important, um, uh, park with all the businesses in there. Um, I, I like your ideas regarding signage, so I think there's a lot more we can talk about of what the town has responsibility for, what the, what the park can continue to do, um, so certainly we recognize that we have a role to play in this as well, um, as we can negotiate with DOT for what's best for certainly safety, um, and also with our business owners in mind. So, thank you again for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKenna.
I want to say the same thing in regards to thanking you for coming tonight and for you being at the work session. Um, I actually ran, uh, eighteen, almost 20 years ago to the day, uh, for council back in New Jersey because it was, uh, a situation with my parents' store, the road wasn't being, uh, taken care of and, um, I wanted to see what I could do about that, so I, I ran for council for my mom and dad's business. So, um, I certainly understand, uh, being a kid from a, a small business of 17 years, um, and I totally empathize with what, you know, you're doing, so just know at least that, I can speak for the dais here, this is something that we, um, it, it's, it's a tough decision and, um, we're definitely, one of the reasons why we're doing this is so we can definitely see if we can sharpen our pencils and, and help you guys out the best we can because, uh, at the end of the day, we want to make things as best we can for you, so, thanks.
Thank you. Other, no, Ms. Friedrichs.
Um, I have been speaking with Paul Olson from Weird Brothers and, um, like, uh, the Vice Mayor, I, I am a huge fan of the businesses in that park. Um, I've, it's, I hate to say this because it's very wrong of me, but it is my favorite part of Herndon. That being said, um, I think our staff is working very hard to find solutions, uh, to the problem, um, and some of the solutions that they've mentioned to us, to me recently at least, um, are not reflected in, um, some of your statements, so there might be information that's still out there that you, um, could benefit by learning, particularly the, the lady with the, um, with the truck business, trucking business. So, um, I hope, uh, you'll continue to work with us, I'm very pleased that we're continuing this, um, more ideas are always better, but as, uh, the Vice Mayor says, the median, um, basically has to close, so, um, thank you so much for being here.
Okay, um, you know, I concur with my colleagues, this is exactly why we're continuing this, this is not something to rush into, we know that it's complicated and when VDOT's involved, that's a whole other level of complication, but we certainly want to do whatever is within our power to help your businesses continue to be successful. And, um, I appreciate the, uh, the conversation and you guys have been in touch with us. There are a lot of things that are being discussed, the U-turn, of course, the roundabout, there's some modifications we're looking at for that, we've had suggestions over the years to, you know, name that a street and put a sign so that it, it is a, it, it's easier to tell people where to turn to come in that way, and, um, I, I'm sure that there are some things that we will be able to come together on and I'm looking forward to continuing to work through it. And this is continued until June 12th, I, I neglected, I neglected to mention earlier, next week is the 5th Tuesday, so there's no work session or public hearing, so that's why it's several weeks out, but I think that's good, it gives us more time to work on this. So, if there's no further discussion at this time, this is a motion to continue made by Ms. Olem and seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, so we will see you back in June. Thank you all for coming and sitting through a long meeting to get to your item, we appreciate it. Uh, we do have one general item, which is, um, Resolution 18G25 to authorize the Town Manager to sign an MOU with Northwest Federal Credit Union to host the Herndon Festival, and Cindy Roder is making her way down.
Madam Mayor and Members of Council, thank you for your time prior to the meeting tonight to help us recognize Northwest Federal Credit Union, not only for their generosity and their title sponsorship of this year's Herndon Festival, but also, uh, to demonstrate that we are a united force coming together to, to request your, your support in our effort to relocate the festival to their campus, uh, starting in 2019. Um, so we talked about this a little bit last week in terms of, of the circumstances and the vacation of, of Vine Street that just happened a few minutes ago is, is one of those first steps that says that, um, the festival needs to rethink itself. So, for the last 15 years or so that, that I've been here, we've been looking around town, looking for an appropriate space, looking for a property, looking for someone who would be willing to take us in as, as a, uh, a lonesome, uh, festival, looking for a home. Lots of people have turned us away. Northwest Federal was kind enough to listen to our request, they got excited about the idea, and, uh, we are so pleased that, that they are willing to take on the, the, not only the burden, but the joy of hosting the Herndon Festival. Um, we have a history of collaborating and working with Northwest, as they have throughout the community, they've done so many things here in Herndon as part of their corporate, um, community outreach program and, and their interest in, in serving and making the community better, not only for their employees but for their members. Um, as you know, the, the carnival at the festival is a key element to, uh, not only the festival itself and, and what people enjoy, but it's also, uh, kind of the financial backbone of the festival, it, it generates about 45% of our revenue. So, um, we felt it was important for the festival to continue at, at the scope and the size that it is that we kept the carnival, um, and we felt it was important not only, um, to keep it together and to keep families together and coming to one site, but also for the logistical, uh, resources that we needed from police and public works and parks and recreation staff. It was, it was not, uh, logical for us to split up and, and do something in the downtown or something somewhere and something somewhere else. So, we wanted to move together as, as a unit and Northwest Federal Campus makes that possible. Uh, it, it will be different in some ways, we will, we'll need to change some things, but we think we'll be able to sustain a lot of the key elements that people think are important to the event. Um, so we're looking forward to the, well, I won't say we're looking forward, but we're, we are excited about the opportunity to, to really figure out how you move a festival like we have and put it in a completely different puzzle box and, and figure out how it works. And, and the staff, Victoria and Harmony and Jeff who are here tonight, and, um, they, they have been terrific to work with so far and we know that they'll be a great partner. So, um, with that, unless you have any other questions, we, we hope you'll authorize Town Manager to sign this agreement in the morning and, and we'll start moving forward. And you all had a, a little glow bottle, water bottle up there at the dais, uh, Northwest is, we'll be handing these out, uh, on Saturday.
Trying to buy our vote, I see what's going on here.
Handing them out Saturday night as part of our glow party, uh, you'll be getting water bottles and glow beads from us and after the fireworks back in the cafe lot, we'll have some music and entertainment going on and, uh, get your glow on, so. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer questions, but...
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on this?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, with that, um, I will actually move Resolution 18G25 to, to approve. I don't usually do that, but this is very exciting. Um, discussion on the motion, Ms. Olem.
You don't want to talk?
I always get to talk.
Yay, I am so excited, we have been talking about this forever.
Yeah.
Not really, I've only been here since 90, but anyway, I've been hearing about it ever since I moved here and we were talking about the downtown. So, by moving this to Northwest means we're getting a downtown, so we're excited about that. And thanks for your help, I think you've got the perfect solution, and I'm glad that we're keeping it all as one big festival and not spreading it all over town because I just don't think it would be as fun. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Friedrichs.
Um, I am also extremely grateful and excited and definitely it's a yay. Um, I, uh, used to work at, um, Arts Herndon and, uh, I want to thank Northwest for being an organization that not only supports the community but asks to support the community and is honored to do so. That is refreshing, delightful, and so charming, so thank you very much.
Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, I'd like to actually take a look at this at a macro level, I think this is another, um, example of how, uh, private and public, uh, relationships can truly work together, um, and I think Herndon is, you know, a, a good sandbox in regards to the rest of the world seeing how, um, both entities can work together, uh, in a partnership and, um, it's great to have, uh, not only neighbors like you but, uh, active participants and very, very grateful for what you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Cunningham?
Echoing my colleagues, want to thank Northwest Federal Credit Union for taking a leadership position and really becoming, um, uh, we've known you, but now the public gets a chance to know you as becoming as one of our, not only a business pillar but a community pillar, so thank you for what you do for our community, we look forward to seeing the new festival next year.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the festival has been in the same place for 38 years, is that right, Ms. Roder? 38 years, um, and it's amazing tradition, uh, it's one of my absolutely favorite things in town, um, and thank you for your sponsorship this year, I'm looking at the lineup, I'm super excited about Jimmy's Chicken Shack, I don't know if anyone else is, but Friday night. So, and funnel cakes, because I'm always excited about the funnel cakes, but, um, it, honestly, the, I think what, um, Jeff spoke about earlier tonight and just acknowledging, as, uh, Ms. Friedrich said, how much you're excited to be part of the community, what we're really proud, proud of is, you know, for 38 years we've done this festival and it's been net neutral for the town, actually, we've made a profit o- over the years, that's not the intent, right? The intent is just to, um, uh, there's, yeah, to break even and to have this great event and, and offer something really fun for the community to do, um, and I think we do that and we do it well, thanks to, um, so many folks, both our staff, our executive staff, and of course, major sponsors, it would not happen without major sponsors like this and being our title sponsor, um, and now offering to host this, uh, I'm going to enjoy our last festival as it is and I'm going to look forward to seeing, um, how the, you know, what the next 38 years looks like at Northwest Federal, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues, I remember when I first came to meet with the President and CEO when he was brand new, and I knew this was being discussed, but it certainly wasn't public, and he brought it up and with such enthusiasm and I just, I kind of knew then that we were going to figure out a way to make this work, so I know it's a huge, um, possible liability for you guys, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of people on your property and, yeah, so thank you for being the kind of, uh, company that's willing to, to do something like that, and I, I think it's, it's definitely going to be a little weird for it not to be in downtown, because, you know, that's the way we've always done it, but I think there's an opportunity here for this location to even be more visible from Fairfax County Parkway and, um, up and down Spring Street and eventually the metro when that, when that opens, so, I mean, I think it's, there are going to be some growing pains, I'm sure that, um, the first festival will learn a lot about all hands on deck and what we need to do to make it run more smoothly, because when you've done it for 38 years, it's kind of like clockwork, so Cindy, we, we got your back, we're willing to help and, uh, we're just really looking forward to this partnership and thank you for sitting here for almost two hours for us to have the chance to tell you thank you. So, um, with that, I will call the question on the motion which was made by the Chair and seconded by Ms. Olem, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Like anybody? Okay, uh, of course, that passes unanimously, thank you very much. And finally, we are almost done, um, we have one consent agenda item that I mentioned earlier that we would like to pull to, um, to consider separately and, do I have concurrence of council to pull that off or do we need to make a motion and vote? Do we have concurrence? Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, so I will call on Jenny Tripoli, she's making her way down here, this is the Resolution to adopt revised financial and internal administrat- administrative transfer policies.
Uh, yes, thank you for, uh, doing this, um, I apologize for the late-breaking change, this is just to clarify a couple of things, uh, one is on section, um, this is only for the updated financial policies, this would be, uh, section three, budget management, and basically it's item C, which is to just specify that recurring revenues may be used for one-time expenditures if that is deemed appropriate. And the second change was related to, um, basically the revenue stabilization fund, and one of the things we wanted to do was tie that to the new fund balance policy because the unassigned fund balance at 20% is the, uh, most important change that we're making, and so we changed, uh, section five, letter D, uh, we struck number two and, uh, reworded number three to basically say that if revenue stabilization was needed to be utilized to keep that 20% limit, that we could go ahead and do that. Um, so it's still very restrictive, but that would be in a worst-case scenario, uh, which we hope we will never see. And those were the two changes, and so thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, uh, we understand things like this happen, so we want to make sure we get it right. Um, are there questions for, uh, for Ms. Tripoli? No, that's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm like, is my kid calling me? Okay, um, thank you very much, um, so, um, I will entertain a motion for, um, Resolution 18G29 with the revisions noted in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have, um, a motion to approve made by Ms. Cunningham, seconded by the Vice Mayor, discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Anyone? All right, thank you very much. Call the question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. That motion carries, and we have finally reached the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Was that you signing it? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. That motion carries, and we stand adjourned at 8:49 PM. Don't forget, don't come next week. We'll see you in two weeks. Don't come next week. All right.